Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting for August 27th, 2025. For more information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit our website at everettwad.gov/citycouncil. For the record, we have Councilmember Bader. He'll be participating this meeting or this afternoon remotely. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin.
Excuse.
Councilmember Bader.
Here. I saw his lips move.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Vogely.
Here.
Councilmember Fossey.
Here.
Councilmember Tui.
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Here.
President Schwab.
Here. And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember, Council Vice President Zarlingo. Thank you, and I'll ask Councilmember Ryan to lead the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Good afternoon. City Council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehopes people and their successors, the Talalup tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes, to bring about a future that includes their people, their voices, and their stories for a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. On to old business. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for August 20th, 2025?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Seconded.
Motion and second's made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Abstain.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, moving on to public comments, which includes written comment acknowledgements. For all written and in-person comments, submitting your name and city of residence is required to make it part of the official record. So, good afternoon, Angie. Do we have any written or public comments?
Good afternoon, President Schwab. We have received no written comments. We do have one individual in chambers to speak, so Jean can please come to the podium. And please press the button on the mic there and state your full name, city, residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Jean Correio, Everett. I live up north, and the issue I'm speaking on today is the speed on 16th Street. Because 16th Street goes from, well, over the top of the bluff all the way over to East Marine View Drive, and maybe a little bit after that. But the speeds there, many in our neighborhood have spoken about this before. The speeds are really not safe. The speed limit's 30. Many people go 50. They come flying down the hill, especially when they're eastbound, and it's dangerous crossing that street. I use, in a typical day, I could use any or all of these streets, like Cedar, Maple, can't remember all the other ones, Baker, Walnut, and just in my casual, my use of the day, and McDougal also, going the Safeway, of course. So I'm in, and they were very much in favor of this reduction. And I just spoke to the chief about enforcement out there as well. Shift change at the college and the hospital is particularly problematic with people getting out of work, they want to get home. Of course, they're in a hurry. They want to get ahead of three cars, you know, so they get home quicker, maybe by 12 seconds. As I mentioned, the cross-traffic is challenging. In particular, at Maple Street and 16th, going northbound, there's a lot of foliage on the house that's on the corner, the left corner there. And it's difficult to see the traffic coming down the hill. And I have talked to people about this before in the city, and I'm not sure if it's code compliance or traffic. I think I've tried both of those avenues and gotten nowhere. A person has to creep pretty far out into the lane to see the traffic, especially if it's going 50 miles an hour, or 40, or 37, or whatever. So, parity of visibility due to landscaping, and maybe someone can clue me in afterwards on who exactly's jurisdiction that is. And one time, I was traveling north on Maple Street there at 16th, and a car, you know, jumped out into the lane in front of me to make a U-turn. How creative is that? That's all kinds of fun to deal with that. Another situation that could help in reducing the speed is striping. Going westbound, there's no striping on the parking lane. Almost no one parks there. I realize that. And, you know, people don't park there because of the speeds. So you got the westbound lane being really wide, lots of cars can, you know, and if they justify themselves way over toward the curb, cars going the other way ride the yellow line. So they think like it's, oh, this is like freeway speeds. This is fun. So striping that to allow for parking could help give a visual aid to the drivers that's saying, oh, yeah, these lanes are smaller than what we're used to using. And I've suggested that to traffic as well. So, maybe I can follow up again with Cory Hurt and see if he has some comments on that. And there's many in my neighborhood that agree with this. I'm not speaking for the neighborhood today, but the people I have spoken with are in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes our public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so let's move on to council comments, beginning with Councilmember Bader, if it works.
Ryan, is it working?
Evidently, Councilman Bader doesn't have much to say. All right. Okay, thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Just happy first day of school for all of our Everett Public School students and a friendly reminder to drive slow at all times, and especially near our schools as little feet are walking to their first day of school and for the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogely.
Good afternoon. On that note, Muckeltoyo School District starts next week, so no matter where you are, just keep those speeds slower. So thank you for bringing that to our attention again. I mean, we're out there, we talk about it a lot, and I'm glad you have a lot of the right names already. No further. Thank you.
Councilmember Fossey.
Thank you for our public speaker. Perhaps, I don't know if Cory's going to be here or not. Okay, maybe he can speak to that later on when he's coming up with regards to the striping for parking and following up on the, because I'm curious about that too when it comes to the visibility on the street. Always happy to also just go talk to a neighbor about it. So, maybe we can chat about that afterwards. And just seconding my colleagues' comments about school starting, and so make sure that you guys are driving extra slow for all of these kiddos that maybe need a refresher on not running into the street and on crosswalks without looking both ways. So be extra safe out there, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, thank you for coming today and bringing this up. As you know, on the action briefing, we are looking at another area in Everett today, but there's also the process for evaluating speed limits, so we're going to be looking at that today. And I think your ideas all came up. We talk a lot about speeding in the neighborhoods. We get a lot of those complaints in the Safety Committee, and so I will bring this up again after today to our Safety Committee. We can look more detail at this area. Plus, we've had other comments on other streets that we're hopefully evaluating. And I think Cory might kind of talk a little bit about the process the city's in right now for evaluating that. But thank you, and I think your ideas were really great, so thank you.
Councilwoman Zarlingo.
Well, just one thing, but before that, I guess I do want to comment on the speed. I was looking at our briefings about some of these speed changes, and I'm an engineer, so I figured that look at the difference between traveling 25 miles per hour and 30 miles per hour. Going to 30 miles per hour adds almost 50% to the energy in the vehicle, and I suspect that's proportional to kind of damage you can do. So, the speed limit reductions may not seem all that big, but they may be pretty significant in terms of safety. And I'm sure Cory Hurt will be able to speak with that way more detail than I can. Just one item, though. Last week, I spent some time walking around Casino Square, part of my district, with State Representative Julio Cortez. We were talking to owners and businessmen there, business owners there, about the coming Fred Meyer closure and handing out some of the dual-language flyers that the city produced to offer residents options on where to shop, where to get prescriptions filled, transit routes, and other resources. So I'd like to thank Representative Cortez for inviting me to do this outreach with him and recognize the city staff who connected us and also produced a really useful handout in an amazingly short time.
Great, and thank you. It's good to hear, and I hope those that might be watching now or in the future, those here in the seats that this council is pretty united when it comes to acknowledging the need to do something with the speed in our streets. And I know it's multifaceted. I know there are so many challenges. There's the labeling, there's calming, but there's also enforcement. And so, and a majority of those speeders has been brought up today, may not live in the city, so we have many challenges. So, I think the council here is pretty united on this, and I hope everyone hears that. So thank you very much. All right. I'm sorry, we don't have debate here. We can chat later, though. Thank you. Well, if you want to, we can talk later afterwards. We don't do debate here in this portion, so. So, so we'll continue on to administrative.
Yeah, well, actually, I guess on that note, Councilmembers Zarlingo, I know when you were out with one of our city staff, Julio Cortez, and his role at the city. That was due to the closure of the South Everett Fred Meyers. And we've been working a lot on that, on responding to that event, and we thank you for your kind words about that effort. The mayor, just letting the council know as well, the mayor joined a letter that some of you might have seen, that UFCW 3000, that's the labor group that represents those grocery store workers with other local leaders. They haven't released it yet. I think they're gathering signatures, but she signed on just to express the disappointment and frustration with Kroger's decision to close our Fred Meyers and others in Washington State. That letter calls on Kroger to engage with their workers and our communities, to find alternatives, to be honest about the actual data at the store level and the true drivers behind their decisions to close and to reinvest in our community stores. We still have, of course, the one that's closer to the Silver Lake area. And then, I think I just have this one other item, yeah. I mentioned the Charter Review Commission. Working with Communications, we'll open that up for folks to apply. We'll soon be advertising at the same location as the Boards and Commissions' applications. And then, Councilmember Ryan asked about if there are topics that council members are interested in having the Charter Review Commission review. You can, and I talked to Legal, you can just send those to me, and I'll be working with Legal, but also with the Commission once it's constituted in 2026, to look at them. There's a pass that council can also propose amendments to the charter, but if there's something that you're like, I'd like them to dig into this and do some work and provide kind of their advice on it, you can send them my way. I think that's it. All right, thanks.
How about on to our city attorney, David Hall?
There's no executive session today. I have a brief update on the controversy surrounding the eligibility of one of our candidates for council representing District 4. I know we've had a lot of questions about that. There has been a challenge filed by one of the citizens from District 4, both with the auditor and with Superior Court. The city does not take a position on the merits of that challenge and how it should come out, but we have filed a motion to intervene in the Superior Court action with the sole purpose of making sure the court understands and follows the kind of unique procedures that govern the challenge to eligibility, because unlike other sorts of lawsuits, it most importantly establishes an expedited review process so that a decision is reached before ballots go out, potentially with somebody's name who isn't eligible or that we know that that person should be on the ballot. So our goal is to make sure that the process is conducted, you know, by the books so that our residents and voters can have assurance that the outcome is the right outcome under the law. I'll be heading over to Superior Court after our council meeting. Hopefully, we'll have a decision on the motion to intervene later today. And one of the things we're hoping for is that they set a hearing on the merits soon enough that we can get a decision before the ballots go out mid-September.
Thank you. Jennifer, did you have something else?
I did. Thanks to Angie for reminding me. It's at least on your agenda, but it wasn't, I didn't remember. But I have a guest as part of the administration update, the Northwest Innovation Research Center Director. If you want to come on up and join me here. You guys have approved our contract with them at various times and not too long ago, and Diane wanted to just share some success stories, I think, about services she's providing. So there should be a button at the base of the mic. I don't know if it's on.
It's green.
Okay, great. You can go for it.
I think we're good. All right. Thank you, Jennifer, and good afternoon, council. My name's Diane Kamyanke, Executive Director of Northwest Innovation Resource Center. I'd like to also introduce Fatima Ahmed, who is joining us remotely. She's one of the recent graduates of our data analytics program that will share some of her comments about her experience through the program. So, as you all know, one of the things that our organization has been focusing on is helping entrepreneurs and innovative small businesses with utilizing new technologies to make their either startup business or their existing business more competitive and resilient so that they can contribute to our economy. And as part of that, over the past few years, we've actually been collaborating with Workforce Snohomish to put together some programs for helping either dislocated workers or underemployed workers with trainings for these new technologies so they can be more productive for the businesses in our area. And one of the programs that we've been working on specifically addressed the issues that we found that some of the graduates of the data analytics program were challenged to find jobs because they didn't have any experience in data analytics on their resume, and that became a requirement for many of the opportunities. And then we also, in talking to small businesses in Everett, there's a number of them that really could use some analytics on a project to make things more effective or productive for them. So we thought maybe we could tie those together. So we collaborated again with Workforce Snohomish where we identified small businesses that had projects that really could benefit from some analytics results. And several of our graduates agreed to function on almost like an internship position to do those projects. And they generally were, I would say, probably about three months in length, so they were limited. And at the end of that, they got a review and material that they could put on their resume for what they were doing. So I thought we would ask Fatima to make comments about her experience in being one of those interns and working. And then I have some comments from some of the businesses that we helped on the other end of that. So Fatima, could you make your comments, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, councilmembers.
One moment, Fatima. I'm going to see if this is something on our end.
Good afternoon.
There, now it's working.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Sorry about that. My name is Fatima, and Everett is where I'm building my future. And NW Innovation Resource Center became a bridge for me, connecting my healthcare and human services background with the growing needs for data skills. In 2024, I was accepted into WA Data Bootcamp, where I not only gained tools like Power BI, Python, SQL, but also applied them to real projects with local organization. And the experience gave me confidence and connection and clear path forward. For example, working with Everett Station District Alliance, I used data and mapping tools like Python, RGS to help identify services, gaps, and community needs. While ensuring privacy was protected, this ESDA clearly insights the strength how they serve Everett families. With Green Project Solution, I applied the data visualization and AI tools to uncover areas where they could improve efficiency and profitability. Those insight gave the roadmap to grow in ways that benefits both businesses and broader community. This program does not just help individuals. It directly helps city of Everett by building a stronger local workforce with demand data skills. It allows businesses and organizations here to access the talents they need without looking outside the region. Immense residents like me can stay, grow, and contribute Everett economy and community well-being. So newer NWRC isn't just a training. It's about catering opportunities, strengthening Everett workforce, and opening doors for people like me and the community in large. Thank you for supporting the group and the program as well.
Thank you, Fatima. So, one of the things that really impresses us is that she is raising four children and working full-time and took time to go through the data analytics program, which, as for some of you may know, is a 20-week, very intense, high-demand job. So she, her task to graduate, and she did great. So we're really happy that she's been able to advance her skills in doing this. So, a couple of comments that were provided by two of the businesses that we helped as well. Partite, which you probably know because works with the city a lot, and also Washington West African Center. With Partite, the data analytics graduate worked on analyzing crash data and where the effectiveness could be changed with the work that Partite's doing. They incorporated being able to analyze the other influencers like pedestrian behavior, weather, et cetera, so that they could more readily, the Partite engineers more readily come up with effective strategies to recommend to you for how to change the traffic patterns, et cetera, with a quick glance and taking into consideration more data, which you can do electronically than what you could do with paper. The other one, Washington West African Center, was, I was not familiar with them, but they handle all of the needs that immigrants from West Africa require from the US. And they've served over 4,000 West African individuals in Everett, and they were doing a lot of it with paper. So it was very unproductive, very un, the quality of being able to match all of the resources being used for any one individual was challenging. So just totally ineffective. So the students or the graduates not only helped create ways to automate the input of that, but then analyze it and put it all together so that they could come up with much more time-saving ways that they could serve more people and also have more effective analysis of who needs what and what the type of services are, et cetera. So there's, I would imagine, projects like that with almost every small business and nonprofit in the area. So we're trying to find ways to promote that program further, but I thought these were really great examples of some of the extent that we have to go to to really help people all the way through and not just do like a talk and then let people on their own to find their way. So it's been very rewarding for us to work with people like Fatima, who take it seriously and take advantage of the opportunities and become really good contributing citizens. So thank you very much for your support. Happy to answer questions if you have time.
Questions? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Fatima.
Jennifer, was there anything else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to our consent items. We have seven consent items this afternoon, one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
So move the motion on consent.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, motion and seconds made. Any quick questions? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader. Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number eight, Council Bill 2508. It's the second reading. Are there any questions? Okay, no questions. The final reading will be September 3rd, 25. Okay, moving on to our action items. Item number nine, Council Bill 2508-42, third and final reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 4003-24, entitled "A Special Improvements Project: Forest Park Pickleball Court Installation to Accumulate All Costs for the Project." Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion and seconds made. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number 10, Council Bill 2508-43, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Lions Park Lighting Project to Accumulate All Construction Costs for the Project. Is there a motion?
So move the motion.
Seconded.
Motion and second's been made. Are any questions? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Action item number 11, Council Bill 2508-44, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvements project entitled Walter E. Hall Community Amenities. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Motion and seconds made. Are any questions? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, we'll now officially open a public meeting on our Transit Development Plan and Annual Report, and we'll begin with the briefing.
Good afternoon, council, and thank you for the opportunity to present the Transit Development Plan, or TDP, this afternoon. The TDP is a state-mandated annual report. Information from this report is having some technical difficulty. The screen is showing that it's sharing here. Technical difficulty overcome.
I'll just clarify for the record. It's, this is a public hearing, that meeting, just for case David Hall reviews the tape later. Thank you.
Picking up where I left off, the TDP is a state-mandated annual report. Information from this report is used by the legislature in their deliberations on the state of public transportation. It lists activities and accomplishments in the previous year and forecasts plans. It lists activities and accomplishments in the previous year and forecasts plans for the following six years and provides guidance for other plans. Although there are budgetary elements, it is not a budget document. And while this document is not a service plan, it does foreshadow what future service plans may look like. This presentation is a summary of the more detailed document in your packet and posted on Everett Transit's website. There have been a couple of modifications via input from the Transportation Advisory Committee on page 13. And these, the final edition will incorporate those statements and and observations. And then, as well as a letter from Future Sound Regional Council acknowledging receipt of and review of the draft plan and affirming comments to the content and of the plan. The TDP was presented to the Transportation Advisory Committee on July 18th and August 17th. And this is a public hearing only and does not require council action. This slide illustrates how the C Comprehensive Plan informs and guides Everett Transit's Long Range Plan, which is currently under development. In turn, the Long Range Plan influences our Transit Development Plan and that in turn shapes annual service changes. Understanding the level of public outreach, analysis and work that goes into these guiding documents should give you an indication of how important transit service is and how much work goes into delivering the best service possible. Again, the TDP is essentially an annual report of the previous year's activities and a six-year look ahead for what is coming. And it covers fixed route and paratransit service delivery as well as operations of the Everett Station. Once the plan is drafted, it is open for public comment. And the process concludes with a recommendation from the Transportation Advisory Committee to the City Council for acceptance during this hearing. The plan is formally submitted to the State of Washington on September 1st. In 2024, we adopted a new mission statement, Connecting People to Life. And this really reflects the mindset and approach that we engage our work with. There's a strong sense of mission to providing safe, reliable and essential connections to work, education, medical services, recreational opportunities and regional transportation options. Late in 2024, Tom Hinkson, our Director of 18 Years Retired, and I stepped in to fill those shoes. Big shoes to fill. Since then, we have reshaped our staff to engage the critical conversations that are occurring regarding transportation in our community, including the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, planning for Link Light Rail and Community Transit Swift Gold Line, as well as Everett Transit's Long Range Plan. In 2024, Everett continued to, Everett Transit continued to experience region-leading growth percentages in fixed route ridership. This marked three straight years of 32% increases in ridership on our fixed route service as we continued a strong rebound from the pandemic era. Based on this, Everett Transit received the Community Transportation Association of the Northwest Award for the Best Small/Medium Size Agency for its Ridership Growth, as well as its progress in fleet electrification. This this growth trajectory was also covered by the Seattle Times as well. In quoting directly from the plan on page 11, "This growth directly reflects the benefits of the 11% service expansion implemented in June of 23, which was fully realized throughout 2024 and strategically designed to meet the evolving mobility needs of the community." Everett Transit Ridership continued to grow in 2024 as well, albeit at a slower pace. This is due primarily to numerous trip generators that were thriving before the pandemic and continue to experience slower rebounds since then. Everett Station is a beautiful facility and continues to be an important multimodal hub in our in our region. While revenues increased by 17%, expenditures increased by 11%. Everett Station continues to have a high cost of operation that cannot be recovered by rent or lease alone, and it is therefore subsidized by Everett Transit's operational budget. In addition to the scheduled service that Everett Transit provides, it also enriches the community in a number of other ways with special service. Some of those are listed here, including Wheels to the Waterfront or Music at the Marina, shuttles to sort of culture, shuttles to the Downtown Parade on the July, on July 4th, as well as the Legion Park Festival and fireworks, and free fare to cooling and warming shelters. In addition to this, we provide service for field trips. We have a partnership with the Imagine Children's Museum and special requests for emergency shelter and/or transportation when called upon. An important upgrade at the Everett Station in 2024 included the installation of electronic customer information at the platforms. This involved the installation of digital signs at the B and C platform, as well as at the B and, pardon me, the D and E platform, six displays in total. And this included, these displays include departure information for all transit agencies serving the Everett Station, as well as local and regional service maps. Commute trip reduction continued its important work of engaging with employers to reduce the number of single occupant vehicles on the road during commuting hours. Important work here included drafting of the 2025 through 29 CTR Plan, as well as other activities that are listed here. In 2024, we were reminded that our operators are frequently challenged with the most disturbing elements of a suffering society. In the early morning hours of December 18th, 2024, King County Metro Operator Sean Yim was assaulted and murdered by a passenger. This tragedy has sparked a renewed regional focus on operator safety, with many agencies scrambling to put in operator safety barriers. Everett Transit operators have had safety barriers available and in place on all buses since mid 2020. Additional safety measures that have been implemented, implemented or are in the process of being implemented include conflict de-escalation training, JDLR training, which stands for Just Doesn't Look Right. What do we do when something just doesn't look right out there? How do we handle that? Adding a road supervisor to be on the road until the last operator is off the road in the evening. Upgrading our radio and emergency response system in the completion in 2025 of the Threat and Vulnerability Assessment that was grant-funded. On the rolling stock side, Everett Transit hit 1 million miles of service delivered via battery electric zero emission buses in early 2024. We also introduced R99 diesel, renewable diesel, 99% renewable to our fleet. Challenges with our earliest battery electric buses and the bankruptcy of the manufacturer led us to purchase five refurbished buses. These buses went through extensive upfitting and renewal before being placed in service and have been performing extremely well, and they do operate on R99 renewable diesel. As the Everett Mall begins redevelopment, we were presented with the opportunity and need to relocate our mall station. It wasn't going to move far, only about 450 feet to the west exactly. But the benefit to customers and operators is quite significant, including better accessibility for the community, safety improvements for customers, safety improvements for operators and more efficient operations. Work is expected to conclude in November of this year. So look for an invite to the grand opening of this important transportation hub in South Everett that sees 90,000 buses arrive and depart every year. Also in 2024, we installed 10 inductive charging stalls, which you see illustrated here at operations and began work for inductive charging at Seaway Transit Center and at the College Station. Everett Station projects include the elevator rehabilitation, design work for a new HVAC system, installation of security badge readers, upgraded wayfinding signage, upgrades to the fire alarm control panels, completed ADA accessibility and accessibility improvements, replacement of the great hall seating, the original seating had been there since the opening of the station, was long in need of replacement. Installation of monitors showing live views of bus bays in the great hall. And then moving into operations, revenues and expenditures. I'll have our Affairs and Finance Manager Brandon Helby provide a brief walkthrough of these and the corresponding pages in the plan.
Hi, I'm Brandon Helby. I'm the Affairs and Finance Manager for Everett Transit. So for a little bit of background here, during the COVID pandemic, both the first Trump and the Biden administrations gave operations grants to transit agencies all over the country, including Everett Transit. Now, what we did with this money at the time was we spent it on drivers' salaries and things like sick leave during those uncertain times. And while we did that, we were able to build up reserves that we planned on reviewing post-pandemic. So the operations reserve that we have is intended to be there to smooth things out if during the next recession or other fiscal emergency. And we have built up a capital reserve that is there for bus replacement or other potential capital needs in the near future. And after these reserves are put in place, our financial picture, less reserves will start to look more like pre-pandemic, but with much more resiliency built in. Next slide. So you can see right here that the total cash reserves year over year are expected to slowly go down over the next five years, but it's still going to be projected to be a much healthier place than we were at in 2019.
Thank you. In terms of service growth, Everett Transit has rapidly built back from the pandemic. And at times, as we have built back, we have presented one set of plans to the public. And the public has come back and said, you know, actually, what we want is something different than that. And I would like to think that if Everett Transit had one superpower, and only one, it would be we listen to our customers. And so as a result of that, that's resulted in the dramatic ridership growth that we have seen. And so the service plan for 2025 through 2030 includes an updated long-range plan, which involves extending service to the riverfront community, service adjustments related to the integration of Swift Gold Line and continued preparation and coordination for the transformation that light rail will bring to our community. In terms of fleet replacement, one of the changes that we have made is to cap our battery electric fleet at 24 buses. And if we proceed with a fleet size of 48 buses, then that means that half of our fleet are going to be diesel hybrid buses and half of them will be battery electric zero emission buses. The diesel-electric hybrids, they will be operating on R99 diesel. When we take that low emission diesel, we pair that up with a hybrid bus, we get very close to what Subaru calls a PZ EV, or practically zero emission vehicle. This is going to provide a significant operational resiliency while achieving a strong balance between that zero emission portion of the fleet and the ability to deliver service even in extreme weather events and prolonged disaster situations. We will do a pilot test with two electric paratransit vehicles in 2026. This does not mean that we're pivoting that direction, but we will do a pilot with those to assess their performance. And we will plan on replacing the existing paratransit vans at a steady cadence between 26 and 2029. Facilities projects at the operations base include adding 10 cabinet chargers, adding a new bus wash facility, beginning in the engineering and design for a maintenance facility to support battery electric vehicles and hybrid, as well as replacement of the primary auxiliary power generator. Additional facility-related projects include finishing and opening the mall station, installing electronic wayfinding signage at the college and at mall stations, the installation of 94 semi-seats, these are the two-seat pedestal seats that you might see out there, not the benches, which add seating capacity with with this 94. Addition of 94 semi-seats will add seating to approximately 16% of the zones in our system that don't currently have seating. And that project has been completed. And then continued addition of shelters, replacement of shelters, bus stop improvements, and we will receive approximately $430,000 in grant funds for adding and replacing shelters over the next two years. To Everett Station, facility projects include replacing the HVAC system. We expect that to kick off in the spring of 26, concluding in the fall of 26. A major project that will help us reduce operational costs at the station. Finishing out the installation of fire alarm control panels, rehabilitation of sidewalks, replacing the public address system and replacing lighting in the great hall and conference center. This slide illustrates where Everett Transit sits in relation to other agencies in terms of sales tax revenue collection. The Long Range Plan update will explore options for additional revenue to drive service expansion. Everett Transit's current sales tax rate of 0.6% has been in effect since 2004. And then lastly, looking at future capital projects, include the cities are that are included in the city's updated comprehensive plan include operations-based relocation and construction, vehicle maintenance facility relocation and construction. And in the right-hand column in much smaller print, ongoing maintenance and upgrades are included in that table. And all of this information, again, within the printed copy of the plan. And with that, we'll open it up for questions, queries and comments.
Questions? Councilmember Zarlingo.
Thank you. A couple of things. One of them, I know Community Transit has been implementing some, sometimes called micro-transit or the on-demand services, and I think they've been pretty happy with that. But I also recognize that they collect twice the percentage of sales tax that we do to support those things. I also recognize that their need, the needs they serve are different than ours somewhat. But could you say a little more about possible, about your perception of those things so far as another transit agency? And then what you see as the future for that for us, what your decision points would be? And I see you're talking about 2031 and later.
Right. So innovative service comments or or concepts such as micro-transit, using minivans, for those that aren't aware of exactly what we're talking about, using minivans or other vehicles, or even using your paratransit vehicles to participate in that. That's that's been a growing trend in transportation across our country for a number of years, and it continues to expand. Community Transit right now has it in several locations and several communities, one of them being Lake Stevens, and I see it coming and going for my neighbor's house and and being used. And so there is a use, there is, the per ride cost of that is quite high. And so that, there's differences of philosophies on that, whether that basically takes away from valuable service on the fixed route side or other areas. But we are baking it in to our long-range plan, and we're baking it in in such a manner that we're going to evaluate it and look at it, and we have some potential areas where that service might be most most appropriate to explore.
And just kind of one other general comment, I know the Everett Station is the only multimodal transit facility here in Snohomish County, so it's kind of got a special role. And then for the city, it's also been a place where we've had a bunch of functions and meetings that it's been an important factor. And I think I try to keep that in mind in terms of of the value we place, the subsidy we do and and its role here in Everett.
Yeah. And we are actively pursuing, we are working with a broker right now to fill vacant space there at the at the station. And so to maximize the lease revenue that's coming in, as well as exploring other revenue generating opportunities there. We believe that the, an active space at the station, it does a couple of things, is it reduces nuisance-type behavior in and around the station, but it also opens people's eyes to this tremendous asset that the city has.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. Thank you for this update. It's very exciting. Feel, these were different chart graphs. I feel like all the lines are heading in the right direction, so I'm glad to see that. I had a question about the correlation between Move Ahead Washington and Youth Riding for Free and some of the ridership numbers and even the budget. So if you wouldn't mind touching on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so there's no question that the Move Ahead Washington and the money that's come through, that has really been beneficial. And it and and it's driven some of that ridership growth that we talked about here today. Some of that's directly attributed to to that. attributed to that, those programs and that funding source. It is exciting. Some of you may be aware that I call it Mocha Monday. I try to give a coffee card to an operator and I go out and take the wheel while they get a little bit of a break, and that helps keep basically my hands in the game of what it means to operate and deliver transit in our community. And I didn't do it on Monday, but I did it yesterday, so it was Mocha Tuesday. And I had 10 young people board the bus. They brought youthful energy with them. Bring it. We're okay with that. They're learning how to use transit. And we're excited about that. So yeah, I don't know if that really answers it, but we're excited about that. Brandon has more.
I would agree that that funding source has been a great for Everett Transit. But you know, as Rex Schmider said earlier, compared to our peer agencies, our growth has been even more than they've been, so we've really been serving that youthful community, but also the community at large. You know, even, you know, peer-to-peer in a way that I think is really helping our city.
Great. So then the 32% increase in ridership from 2023 also captures youth that are boarding the bus, even though they're not booping a card or whatever the official term is.
Yeah, we actually have manual counters on the bus, so that when, and then the operator will actually record that manually on their, what we call their 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 headcount sheet or their pre-trip sheet, it goes by both names. But we put that down, and so yesterday I hit that clicker 10 times on Route 7 South from the college to the mall.
Fantastic. And I would love to tour the operation center sometime. I think it sounds really interesting. And I think it'd be helpful for just decision-making as well to get a visual on what it looks like, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, I have a question here, Brandon. This is slide 15. A question about the beginning balance. Did that include, I noticed how you expressed the 24 end balance you set aside, you separated and put reserves. Is that the same for the beginning balance also? Was there like two categories? I see an end balance and a reserve for 2024. Was that separated out at the beginning of the year also?
Correct. Yeah, we had separated aside the reserves, I think around 2023 is when we started building up the reserves. This TDP is sort of a, in the past, we'd used like a single template, and this TDP is kind of an overhaul, just to really point out that our, to be more deliberate about pointing out that there are reserves and that we don't intend to keep these, you know, in our balance permanently.
Thank you. And then I got a question for you about this plan. Was it presented to the bargaining unit, or were they involved in the process or any part of it?
The TDP in this format or in the format that we presented to the Transportation Advisory Committee is not typically presented to to the ATU 883, but they are involved, I mean, through labor management meetings, they are involved in just ongoing day-to-day activities. Was there a particular element that you were?
No, I just wondered as, like, as a participative in creating this plan.
We do, we have a monthly newsletter as well called The Dispatch that we socialize a lot of this information in and through. So it's kind of an ongoing process of communication, and really over the last year, that's something that we've really been focused on and trying to bring. As far as in terms of unity and togetherness, and just making sure that everybody's aware of where we're going and how we're getting there. And as one individual says, our why, why are we doing all of this?
Thank you, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President. Hopefully you can hear me all right. Great. Thanks for the report, Mike. Just two quick questions. One, digital signage at the station, and I haven't figured this out, and I've gotten asked a couple of times. Is that scheduled arrival or departure times, or is that real-time information about what time the bus should arrive?
Yeah, that's real time.
Great, excellent. And then last question, of course, the, you know, you mentioned the horrific murder down in Seattle. And obviously also not just driver safety, but rider safety as well. Mike, I don't know if you have an answer for it now, but I'd be kind of curious to know on Everett Transit, you know, what kind of tracking do we do of incidents, whether police are called, or customer, or driver, driver surface incidents that happened, even if law enforcement wasn't called? So anyway, I might be kind of curious to get some data on that. I assume it's pretty low, but I think it'd be a good piece of information for us to have as well. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. So part of the reporting process is for all transit agencies is the National Transit Database, and that captures information relevant to collisions, injuries. And most recently, they've expanded that, those definitions, and they've also built upon them to include operator assaults, as well as other assaults and injuries. And so those are all captured and reflected in the TDP, because that information is also submitted to the National Transit Database. So you can see that the instances and occurrences of that are still quite low, and that's where we want them to be. And so we have to show through the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, which is a requirement to remain in good standing with the FTA. We have to demonstrate our activities related to keeping our passengers safe as well as our employees safe.
Councilmember Wobley was.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I just get very excited about this every year. That's probably odd, but still true. And so good presentation, and I'm just, I remember being here almost 10 years ago and all of, you know, the issues that Everett Transit was, had looming, you know, budget-wise. And so it's exciting that that is so much better and that we still have our hometown Everett Transit, because it does a lot for the people of Everett. And I know that this was all put together before Kroger's issuing statement. Will Fred Meyer closing have, can you consider Fred Meyer's closing having any detrimental effect to like Route 7? Or like, will that type of thing be placed into next year's TDP, or it's just a wait-and-see game?
Yeah, there's no, and I know you didn't mean it this way, there's no game about it. This is, this is, this is pretty serious when we have a store of this, how it's being used and what it's been, how it's, what it means to the community and when it closes its stores. So a couple of things that we're doing immediately with that is just really making sure that the existing resources that we have right now, such as the Route 12 that runs 65 trips up and down Casino Road every day, that that document that was put out over the last week that shows where the grocery stores are, where the standalone pharmacies are, where the one-of-a-kind or stand, or one-off ethnic food stores and all of these others are, how can you connect to those on the existing transit service? So making sure people know what exactly we have right now, and then working with community partners to identify where those gaps are, and then strategically planning to fill those gaps. And we've already got some plans in the work that we presented that we're working on, and we're just gonna, we'll unveil those probably in the very near future. But also, just to be honest with you, we're also talking about what does this mean for that community sustainably, and we're already starting to take that in. Assistant Director Sabina Raya and I were speaking about this this morning. What does that mean, how we align for March service and even earlier than that? So we're just, we're looking at that, and it is weighing on us because we know that this is a significant need for our community. And one of the benefits of having your own transit system is that they can come in and assist and pivot quickly to meet those needs.
And just to address kind of your first comment, during the COVID pandemic, I've worked closely with Tom on not only our financial planning, but also our safety planning for the drivers and for the community. And I will stand by whatever transit did and say that we were one of the best transit agencies in the country to balance safety and balance our financial needs.
Awesome. Thank you. And really quickly, the semi-seats, are those like the leaning seats at bus stops? Like, can you, what are those? Are they in the bus or at the bus stops?
No, they're at the bus stops. Yeah. And what they are, it's a single pedestal, and there are two seats attached to it that come in. Sometimes they're like a half-round separator between them. They're bolted down, and you'll go along, for example, South Broadway, almost all the bus stops along South Broadway have them now.
Okay, thank you. And Hunger Games is a game that nobody has any fun in. So, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Fosse?
I just had a quick follow-up question. You said the assaults were added recently to the National Transit Database. How recently?
Those, the requirement for that, I believe, came through in 2023.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
And I just had one.
I think that that came part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, that those were added to the P-TAS for the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan.
Okay, and I just had one more ask for the future, somewhere down the road. Nice to see some statistics on some of the other ancillary services that you provide, like Fourth of July, parades, large emergency response scenes, our flooding, some of the other nice services you provide to the city that doesn't get a lot of attention, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Somewhere down the road. Thank you for that. With no further questions, is the presentation complete? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd hear a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second motion.
Okay, clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, well, moving on to briefing and action item number 13, adopt a resolution revising the posted speed limits on the length of 16th Street and Holly Drive between 100th Street, Southwest and Evergreen Way.
Right, Cory is here, and I think, perfect. Now you can share screen and.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you about safer speeds in Everett. Our speed management policy that I'll be presenting today is part of Vision Zero Everett, our comprehensive plan, safety action plan to reduce and eliminate serious injuries and fatal crashes in Everett. I'm Cory Hurt, City Traffic Engineer. So speed plays a role in about 12% of our serious accidents and fatal accidents. It's a top three contributing factor, and it's certainly going to be one of our priorities in Vision Zero Everett, which I hope to come brief you on in two weeks. So the basic rule of speed limit establishment is established under state law. It's adopted in Everett Municipal Code under the Washington Model Traffic Ordinance and state provisions, and it sets city speed limits at 25 miles per hour unless otherwise posted. State law also grants the city of Everett authority to set speed limits based on an engineering and traffic investigation with changes by resolution. Speed limits need to be set somewhere between 20 and 60 miles per hour on five mile-per-hour increments under the law, so a wide range of speed limits can be chosen from. And I also wanted to add, in the last legislative session, new provisions were added for shared streets that allow cities to post 10 mile-per-hour speed limits and prioritize pedestrians and bicycles. In recent history, there's been three approaches for an engineering and traffic investigation to set safe speed limits. The engineering approach, based on the operating speed or what you've often referred to as the 85th percentile speed, is a speed that most drivers are willing to travel at or below. This methodology hasn't been used in a couple decades. It was supplanted in the 1990s by other, better and safer approaches. In recent history, there have been three, excuse me, over the past two decades, the expert approach has been refined to add contextual features like the number of driveways, the presence of sidewalks and bike facilities. And the latest research from the Texas Transportation Institute and Michigan State University provides the best fact-based method to make defensible decisions about speed limits. National Cooperative Highway Research Program Report 966 is the most recent published document and methodology for setting safe speed limits. It uses measured speeds and roadway context to make decisions, and it's one of the foundational documents in our policy. The other methodology, excuse me, the other methodology in common use today is a safe systems method that prioritizes pedestrians and other vulnerable users to establish target speeds and recommends speed limit changes. This method is less data-reliant than the expert approach and is presented, most recently, in published document called NACTO City Limits. It's another document we used in the creation of our policy. Most of the speed limit in Everett are decades old, and some arterial speed limits haven't been changed for over half a century. As we move forward in establishing the best speed limit practice for Everett, it's important that the changes we provide provide a consistent, appropriate and safer driving speed citywide. The methodology and policy developed by Vision Zero Everett provides a data-driven approach that's checked against a target speed range to provide defensible and realistic speed limits. I'm going to provide a brief explanation of the policy, not so everyone here is an expert, but really so everyone understands that setting of speed limits is a thoughtful and balanced approach to a safer street. It all starts by gathering data. That's the mostly speed data, 50th percentile or average or mean speed and 85th percentile speed. We also collect the roadway context and the roadway classification to guide speed decisions. An appropriate speed limit setting group is chosen, and the data is then inputted into a decision matrix. Ultimately, the result is a suggested speed limit, and that's really where the process starts. Roadway context is defined in the latest research from the NCHRP and is divided into five categories. There's rural, rural town, suburban, urban, and urban core. These categories fit fairly well with Everett's land use designations. Land use was used instead of zoning. Land use tends to change less often and makes our decisions more durable. We were able to correlate land uses in the Everett Comp Plan with the research. Rural and rural town could be eliminated because they didn't really fit well with the character of Everett. Even more rural roads like Larimer Road and Snohomish River Road do still have some suburban character. So for roadway context, we used Everett land use designations of residential representing suburban, commercial mixed-use being urban, metropolitan center being urban core. And we added a new roadway context, industrial, for our streets with industrial and manufacturing focus. Following the research, we then use the roadway classification and land use to select a speed limit setting group. These groups define the relative priority and balance for the facility. For example, a major arterial passing through downtown like Rucker Avenue needs to have vulnerable road users as the top priority and uses speed limit setting Group A. Industrial streets like 75th near Boeing tend to have less pedestrian crossing activity, and operating speeds can provide more priority for shipping goods and providing services. These speed limit setting groups each have their own matrix or checklist to help decide what speed is appropriate. Here's an example of the variables for a speed limit setting Group A. We adjusted the natural research values to fit Everett. Things like signal density and driveway density were adjusted to better represent an appropriate threshold. In this case, we checked off each column, we check off each column, and use either the rounded-down 50th percentile speed or the closest 50th percentile speed in five mile-per-hour increments. Our first case study to calibrate the policy was Holly Drive. We defined three roadway segments on Holly and split them into logical pieces. For Holly, we decided that Airport to 100th Street Southwest would be one segment, 100th to 4th would be another segment, and 4th Avenue West to Evergreen Way as the third segment. 100th to 4th would be another segment, and 4th Avenue West to Evergreen Way as the third segment. Holly Drive is a collector arterial posted at 30 miles an hour and enters the city from the south as Beverly Park Road. The typical roadway section is two lanes wide with bike lanes and sidewalks. It serves about 5,500 vehicles per day and has a 20 mile per hour school speed zone at Challenger Elementary. Holly is a good case study for the proposed policy. It's a collector arterial with both commercial mixed use and residential land use designated along its length. For our evaluation, we analyzed both speed limit setting groups A and B and reviewed the suggested speed limit. The suggested speed limit was in the lower of the two if they differed. So here's how the matrix works. We just start checking boxes. This is speed limit setting Group A. We entered the contextual data in the matrix and chose a speed recommendation with any box checked in the far left column. Essentially, we look to the left, and if there's a box checked, that's the column we use. In this case, the research would say to choose the rounded down 50th percentile or mean speed. The speed limit setting process starts with a suggested speed limit. We then have a technical working group of engineers and police to validate the decision and compare it against target values. And then it goes before the Transportation Advisory Committee and then to counsel by resolution. Last Thursday, the Transportation Advisory Committee unanimously approved and recommended the speed limits I bring forward today. So, based on the rounded down 50th percentile speed, the speed limit setting policy suggested the following speed limits on Holly Drive. From Airport to 100th, the policy suggested 30 miles an hour. From 100th Street to 4th Avenue West, where Challenger Elementary is located, it suggested 30 miles per hour, and from 4th Avenue West to Evergreen Way, it suggested 25 miles per hour. The Speed Limit Technical Group convened and decided that because of Challenger Elementary and the number of students crossing daily, we made the recommendation that 100th Street to 4th Avenue West be posted at 25 miles per hour. This also made logical sense because it broke Holly essentially in half from end to end, a portion of it being 30 and a portion of it being 25. 16th Street was also a case study to calibrate the speed limit policy and make sure it was realistic for Everett. It's a collector arterial serving about 5,200 vehicles per day with sidewalk and parking on both sides. It has the highest traffic volume of any east-west streets that are north of downtown. So, the policy recommended from Grand to Broadway, a posted speed of 25 miles an hour, and from Broadway to East Marine View Drive, a posted speed of 25 miles an hour. The Speed Limit Technical Group agreed and decided that 25 miles an hour was appropriate for both segments. This again is the Everett Speed Limit Setting Process. It really doesn't differ from processes that we followed in the past. And I described earlier. So after developing the policy, which will be published online within a week, what are our next steps? We're going to have grant that we're going to be, that we successfully got from the Safe Streets for All program. It will be $400,000 to essentially evaluate every street in Everett. And there is a federal match, so that we will be creating a speed management plan. There will be an evaluation of 77 more arterials and collectors. We have a total of 79 streets in Everett, and all of those will be broken up into multiple sections. We'll evaluate a 20 mile per hour residential speed limit. We'll look at other agencies like the City of Seattle, Portland and Tacoma that have implemented them and see if they fit for the city of Everett. We'll be looking at alley speed limits. We get quite a few concerns about those as well. And then we'll be also asking for recommendations on the new 10 mile per hour shared street. What might be, what streets might fit best for that process? So, that's all I have for a presentation today. I know there was some questions from public comment. I'd be happy to answer. And I'd also be happy to answer any questions that councilmembers might have.
Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, thank you, Cory. That was great. Really appreciate it. Yeah, I know that there were a few other ideas that came forward today about helping to reduce. So that would be great for you to cover that. But I also had a question about the shared streets because I have a neighbor who is already reached out to me as soon as it was passed this last spring. I'm really curious about that. So, what should we tell them as far as if someone has a block or two that might work for this? How do they bring that forward? What's the best format?
So for right now, we're just starting the process, like most cities, of looking for which kinds of streets best fit. In my mind, we'll be looking to establish very low-volume roads where people are already walking in the street on a nightly basis. They go out for their walks. We wouldn't want them on higher-volume streets, and they don't make a lot of sense on streets where there are already actively used sidewalks. And so, we haven't developed our framework for that yet, but we do know that that is certainly going to be of interest. I've already also gotten a couple calls on that. And so, we'll be looking at developing kind of an overarching policy for what streets best fit that shared street, and that'll be forthcoming.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I had a question about, you said you had 77 street locations that you had. Is there a list somewhere online that maybe administration could just send a link to us at some point?
Yes, I can get that map to administration.
It's on a map. It's not like a.
Yeah, it's on a PDF map. It's also on Map Everett as well.
Map Everett? Okay, thank you. And then I had a question about the shared street. Are those one-way?
Those don't have to be one-way or two-way. They would be, a good example of a street I would be thinking of might be down on the Silver Lake Loop, 118th and 119th. Those might be good candidates. There's no sidewalks. There's a lot of people that walk that street on a daily basis and through the neighborhood, and it's a very low-volume street. So, those are the kind of streets I think that best fit that state policy.
I noticed in Seattle that they have some of the residential streets. They have big signs. They're basically almost blocked off in one end. Is that what's somewhat part of the shared street? Is there a particular name for that style or?
It's certainly possible to do that, but that we would start with the shared street.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fossey.
I would also like to hear the answers to some of our neighbors' questions. Just before that, thank you so much for all the work and everything put into this. I, as much as anybody, love data-driven, you know, solutions and processes and everything. For some of our neighbors at home, they might see this and think, oh, well, that seems like an overly bureaucratic kind of approach to this where we could have just changed it. But there are reasons that you have to go this in-depth process because I know a lot of our neighbors, and even before I was in this position, as myself, we were advocating for the changing of the speed limit on 16th. Is this required for some of the funding elements that we are trying to secure to do some of the work? This whole entire process and everything? And then, two, my other question is, is there any tie-in to safe routes to schools? Because I know 16th in particular is one of those very difficult streets for kiddos to cross to make it over to Hawthorne Elementary. So, yeah, that's two questions.
Sure. So, answering the second question first. Yes, definitely 16th, the research and our efforts did support lowering the posted speed limit. And I think it was at 16th and Baker, there's a crossing there that we are looking at putting a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's on our list someday to do that. I think that, you know, certainly what they're finding with the data is that when the speed limit is lowered, it raises attention. And those over-speed vehicles, so high-speed vehicles that we heard in our public comment period, those tend to be greatly reduced. So, and then your first question? I'm sorry.
Was this process and everything that you had to go through, does it tie into the funding?
It doesn't tie to funding, but it is part of the state law. So, it requires to change speed limit. It requires a traffic and engineering investigation. And this is the best method and kind of the state of practice that we felt we should follow.
Councilmember Vogely?
Still getting the neighbors' answers, and 93rd Street Southwest seems like a prime candidate for 10 miles per hour, but maybe I'm wrong. There's no sidewalks, but there's buses all the time and people just, it's slow, whatever. You'll see. You'll look into it. But my original thought was, I am very glad that the 85 percentile business is, you're moving forward and changing it up. I know that a lot of community members will see that as beneficial in getting these speed limits changed because as you mentioned early on, it's kind of antiquated. So, just, that's a comment, not a question. And I'm very curious. I'm sure there was more that was asked earlier, but the striping for parking to make. Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to answer that. So, yeah, it's very clear that some parking in Everett is striping, is striped while other is not. And I think that has been historically done based upon things like public requests, crash history, if people are getting their cars run into. When we come back, when I come back and talk about Vision Zero Everett, it is one of the recommendations that we do more parking striping to narrow the roadway so that traffic does slow down in our neighborhoods. And so, I think you'll hear much more about that in a couple weeks.
Councilmember Bader, you have a question?
Thanks, Council President. Yeah, great, great, great presentation. And appreciate the process and the good thought that was given to this. I guess my concern though is, are we just setting ourselves up to increase constituent frustration and cynicism? Because already, at least my experience with 16th, for instance, is there, it's not unusual to see cars going down 16th, probably 40 miles an hour or more, and yet, nothing happens. Now we're going to lower it to 25, and are we going to have more residents see, becoming cynical that we really don't do anything about speeding traffic? Because now, now we got that many more exceeding the law. So what, why would I, as a constituent, not feel more cynical that the city is not, is just putting something up there and really not doing anything about the problem itself?
Yeah, so when we change the speed limit on a road like 16th, we would go out and we would, you know, post it at 25. We would put orange diamonds on it. We'd put the speed trailer out for a week in either direction to reinforce that the speed limit is lowered. I think there's a prevalent thought amongst drivers that the speed limit is really not the speed limit, that it's, you know, that officers feel it's five-year fine, 10-year mine. And what we're finding with the lower speed limits and and that doesn't mean every speed limit in the future is going to be lowered in Everett, but that those over-speed drivers recognize those lower speeds and they do, they do lower that 40 mile per hour driver that's, you know, driving 10 over or higher will lower their speed in those areas. And, but we have a couple processes, you know, we obviously use enforcement and enforcement plays a critical role in this. There's also, you know, photo enforcement in certain areas in and around parks and hospitals that are allowed. But going forward, it's going to be really a public education campaign that it's not okay to speed in Everett anymore.
Thanks, Cory. Appreciate any information you can share on like the data that does show that lowering the limit does impact the drivers already at the extreme. I'd be interested to see that data. Thanks.
Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, thanks, Cory, for those answers. And the question that we had about foliage or trees or things that get in the way from stop signs and just seeing oncoming traffic, what's the best course of action for our citizens?
Sure. So, the best course of action is to probably call Public Works and get a service request started. They can also get online and do an online service request. It gets routed to my department. We go out and do an evaluation. And then it gets passed off to code enforcement. Sometimes those requests come directly to code enforcement and they contact us. So we go out and take a look. But eventually, it is, you know, it is the adjacent property owner's responsibility to control their vegetation and intersections. We'll go out and make a determination whether there's adequate site distance for a driver to see and come to a stop.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fossey.
Does the See Click Fix also work with that too?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, councilmember. Yes, the Everett Work or See Click Fix, as some people call it, that also gets turned into a service request at Public Works and goes through the same process.
Thank you. One last question I have. When it came to the stripe before parking, you said that we'd hear more in general, like in a few weeks about that. With regards to the particular issue just with 16th Street, what would be, I guess, the process if neighbors have identified, like, can we do it here? Is this possible? It seems like it would help.
Sure, yeah. As far as getting parking striped, they can, same process, just reach out to Public Works through a service request or my name is all over the internet and number. They can give me a call and make that request, and we'll get a service request started and we'll send our crew out to make an evaluation and get it marked out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. And as you could tell, the representation up here, we're very passionate about this issue, right? Meaning, most likely that the entire city is passionate about this. So, appreciate the presentation. And so, moving on.
Resolution.
Okay, motions are made to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. And with no further business, we are now adjourned.